Looks like we are, both of those are active right now. So Larry, you can go ahead.
Pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, included in Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. On March 17th, 2020, I issued a declaration of emergency pursuant to the authority granted by the Village Code, Illinois Municipal Code and the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act to address the health threats posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. On June 15th, 2020, I executed a written determination that, given the ongoing emergency associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent. On June 26th, 2020, Governor Pritzker issued a new disaster proclamation, an executive order 2020-43 that declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 50 people at the regular public meeting location to be infeasible in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, as amended by Public Act 101-0640. Governor Pritzker reissued this declaration on December 11th, 2020 through a renewed disaster proclamation and executive order 2020-74. Executive Order 2020-74 issued on December 11th, 2020 has restricted in-person attendance at meetings to a maximum of 10 persons. In accordance with the governor's disaster proclamation, my declaration of emergency, my determination regarding these meetings, I, as village president, hereby determine that in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. Accordingly, this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees is being conducted virtually with members participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village Manager Corrali is in the Village Boardroom as required by the Open Meetings Act. Would you please call the roll?
Certainly, President Levin. Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
All right. As noted, today's village board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software and is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page in accordance with state law and as the village continues to support social distancing to prevent the spread of COVID-19. A quorum of the members of board are present via remote access. To help facilitate this meeting, I ask each member of the village board and staff to mute your vines if you're not speaking and to unmute your vines when you do speak to help minimize background noise. Members of the public are muted and should remain muted during the meeting and may not share their videos. After each agenda item is presented, I will ask each trustee if they have any questions or comments. I will call the trustees in alphabetical order. As required by law, I will ask for a roll call rather than a voice vote on any agenda item requiring a vote. Okay, our first item of business, which is item two on our agenda, is to consider the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting on November 19th at 5:30 PM and the Board of Trustees' regular meeting of November 19th, 2020 at 7 PM. Does anybody have any corrections or changes? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Hallwax seconded.
Excellent. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Excellent. Our next order of business is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rules the board approved on April 16th, 2020, here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with meeting agenda. In a moment, I will ask management analyst, deputy village clerk, Jordan Lister, to read the public comments on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting in compliance with the instructions that were previously published with the meeting materials. Public comments received regarding the items on the agenda will be read when the agenda item involved is discussed. Management analyst Jordan Lester, did we receive any public comments to be read tonight?
President Levin, we did not receive any public comment.
Thank you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during this meeting, please email your comment to glencoe-meeting, that's singular, at villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. Right now, I would like to advance an item that was earlier on our agenda, which relates to what I often talk about as the first of the two legends of our prior village managers, a person with whom I'm pleased that I've had the opportunity to know since he was village manager here and who I consider to be a truly great village manager, if not the best of any village manager in the country or its history. It's a matter that relates to Bob Morris. And the item that I would like to advance now and I want to read is a proclamation with respect to Bob. And it reads as follows. Whereas Robert B. Morris has selflessly dedicated more than 70 years in service to our community as an employee, volunteer, rotarian and treasured member of the Glencoe community. And whereas Robert B. Morris as Glencoe's third and longest-serving village manager from 1951 to 1982 oversaw countless operational and organizational achievements, including the combination of the village's police and fire departments in 1954 into a single public safety department with officers cross-trained in police, fire, and emergency medical services, as well as the hiring of the first African-American public safety officer north of Evans, Illinois in 1960. And whereas Robert B. Morris, in addition to his village service, has contributed his time and talent in service to the broader Glencoe community, including as a board member for Family Services of Glencoe, Glencoe Union Church, and the North Shore Boy Scouts Council. And whereas, Robert B. Morris has also served as a member of the Glencoe Rotary Club since December 9th, 1950. Glencoe's local chapter of the International Civic Organization dedicated to upholding the values of service above self and creating positive change across the globe through the promotion of peace, education, and other critical issues. And whereas Robert B. Morris has served as president of the Glencoe Rotary Club no less than twice, served over 20 years as club secretary and on countless other Rotary project committees. And whereas Robert B. Morris exemplifies the attributes of a model rotarian and local civic leader, consistently thinking and acting in the interest of the greater good of all people and embodying the tenets of the Rotary four-way test. And whereas Robert B. Morris's unparalleled 70 years of service to Rotary places him among the very few members worldwide to hold such an honor and underscores dedication to service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village president and Board of Trustees of the Village of Glencoe, Illinois, express on behalf of all the citizens of the Village of Glencoe their tremendous appreciation to Robert B. Morris for his exemplary service and dedication to the Glencoe community during his over seven decades involved in Glencoe Rotary and other fundamental local organizations. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this proceeding and that an executed copy of this resolution inscribed with the signature of the village president and bearing the corporate seal of the village, as attested to by the clerk, be presented to Robert B. Morris, dated the 17th day, AD 2020, at the Village of Glencoe, Cook County, Illinois. I would repeat that Bob is, in my view, a legend and is very hard to live up to, such a tremendous legend. And we are very lucky in Glencoe to have had him here and devoted to helping us accomplish all the things that we have done. Phil, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to just add to President Levin's comment that there are many people worldwide who know Bob Morris as a legend in the field of city management. I've known Bob for the over 18 years that I've been in this business and there is no one else who has the type of reputation and the tremendous abilities that Bob did when he was working and that he continued afterward. He has been a true mentor to me and to literally dozens, if not hundreds, of city managers around the world. And that Bob is so much a part of the fabric of this community is truly, truly something special. And so it's, to be able to acknowledge his years of service in Rotary, we had a Rotary meeting last week where he was, where there were tributes paid to Bob from all parts of the globe, including the current president of Rotary International, who hails from Germany. And it really was a great celebration of his service to Rotary and to Glencoe and to the broader community. So Bob really is, he's really something special. I know he's here this evening. Bob, your microphone is muted, but if you wanted to say a few words, we wanted to open the floor to you. And Sharon, maybe you can unmute.
Well, while you unmute, Bob, let me go through one other aspect because I'd like everybody else to have their opportunity to vote to second what we have all said. Could I have a motion to approve that declaration?
So moved.
Second.
Phil, would you call the roll?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
That shows, as is always the case when we deal with doing something to honor Bob because of all he's done, it is unanimous. Bob, would you like to say anything?
It's looking like unfortunately, his microphone is not unmuting for some reason. We're trying to help with that, but it doesn't seem to be working for some reason.
I say so much in meetings, people would like to figure out how to keep mine muted, but it hasn't worked yet. All right.
We'll keep trying.
We keep trying, and if we get it back, I will come back to Bob. There is no committee report, which is our next order of business from the Committee of the Whole tonight because we didn't have a Committee of the Whole meeting. So I will go directly to Trustee Vrie. Could you tell us what went on Tuesday at the Finance Committee, please?
Yes, thanks, President Levin. We had a meeting on Tuesday and covered a few topics, our normal review of the monthly finances. So what started the year on a pretty awful note with just the academy shutting down has now somewhat reversed in terms of what we're seeing in village finances. We've had sales taxes, sales tax come back up and we're showing positive to what we would expect this month. Still under for the year, but we've had a nice recovery there. And then building permits are also starting to pick back up. So we're seeing a nice recovery in some of the areas that were hit earlier in the year. We still think we're going to come in under what we budgeted by about $250,000 for general fund revenues, but all in, it's much improved from where we were earlier in the year. So that was the first part of the meeting. Second part of the meeting was to do our normal review of the community improvement projects. I keep forgetting what CIP stands for. So anyway, we went through the CIP, no new projects for this month. And then we discussed the bringing the bond, bond sale to referendum and the projects associated with that bond sale. And that was the, you know, the crux of the conversation. It was a shorter meeting this month, but those are the things we discussed. Thanks.
Thank you. The Plan Commission had stuff before that's important this month. Trustee Miller, do you want to tell us what's gone on?
I would love to tell you, we had a really, really interesting meeting. The one item before, this was December 9th. The one item before us was the, was exterior appearance review for the former Walgreens building in Hubbard Woods Plaza. The owner plans to completely demolish the building and rebuild a new office and retail building on the exact same footprint, following all of our zoning laws, et cetera. So it doesn't require any action by zoning committee or by us, just the appearance review of the Plan Commission. Also, and this is, this is really the only disappointing part of it, the work will only cover the Walgreens building and not the rest of the plaza. It will, it will look substantially better. It's just architecturally much more interesting. There will be four entrances off of Scott. That is so that there can be retail entrances. So there will be a lot of different retail spaces, is the idea. There's a terrace on the second floor that I think goes around three sides of the building. There's, if you want to take a look at it, you can take a look at the Plan Commission Agenda Packet. Anyway, we, we all really, we thought the architecture was, was quite lovely and will enhance that part of town substantially. Anyway, that was it. We, we meet again at the end of January. January 27th will be our next meeting.
Thank you, Barbara. Joe, I know in November Stella had several miracles and did unbelievable things, but it looked to me a little bit like we're getting some snow today. Anything new to report on the golf club?
Yes, President Levin, it was another great month for, for the golf course aided by Mother Nature because we had seven days in November. If you remember, early November was in seven straight days of 70 degrees. So with that, the golf course was rather crowded. There were, this year, 41,000 rounds played. And to put that in perspective, it was 11,000 rounds more than last year. Last year, if you remember though, it was rather a wet year, but this year we had, despite all of the bad things from 2020 with COVID, the weather for the summer, fall, summer and fall was fantastic for golf. Also, the Phase 1 work with the fund, professional fundraisers is coming to a close. There'll be a summary report presented to the village in coming months. And Phase 2 work with Campbell and Company will begin in January and that will take us to a comprehensive fundraising plan. So the Golf Advisory Committee meeting is this Monday. So there'll be more to report come January.
Thank you. Peter, what is new in the Sustainability Task Force world?
Everybody, so the Task Force is hard at work with our mission of making Glencoe the most desirable and sustainable community in the universe. And this past meeting, December 8th, we dug into four of our key topics. That includes green yards, sustainable businesses, recycling and waste, water protection, and conservation. And we have some upcoming articles that we hope to get out there in a variety of channels on several of these topics. So that's been, that was one focal area of our discussion. Another area we discussed was how to expedite some structural change in Glencoe for things exactly what Trustee Miller was talking about. Some key investments, as we all know, over the past year or so, there's been some major reinvestments in Glencoe. And how do we make sure our codes are as, are what we want them to be thinking about the future as these investments will be very long-term and really affect the character of Glencoe? So we are eager to figure out a way to engage in more structural change, building codes, and getting some support for this type of perspective. And perhaps we could recruit a couple more trustees to engage in these discussions to help advocate for, you know, this vision we have. We touched on an idea of harvesting wood from the Hoover Estate, which as you know, has been an issue in terms of losing trees and the notion that perhaps some of the lumber from the trees that are felled can be converted into community art or community benches or perhaps personal furniture-making or building homes or shelters with the wood harvested locally. And there are some services available to make that happen. And so we, we explored that idea, just at this point, just an idea. But that could be an interesting, something interesting to consider. We also continued to talk about how to leverage the library and there's been a wonderful collaboration with the Sustainability Task Force and the library, and it's only getting stronger. So we spent some time thinking about potential speaker series, series in how and who might be able to attract a good audience through the library. And I think that was the bulk of our discussion from our last meeting. We do have a meeting coming up in a few weeks. Everyone is invited. We meet remotely. I encourage anybody from the public and anybody who's, who's here on this call to, to join us. The details of the meeting invite are always available on the Village of Glencoe website. So please keep your eyes and ears open for seeing messages around sustainability. Make a note and share them with your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Gary, have there been much going on with the Community Aggregations Forum?
Well, we did meet again, yes. And we continue to reach out into the community by meeting with some of the other groups, such as the Clergy Association and the folks over at the Botanic Gardens, reached out to the superintendent of District 35, others. And so that work continues. At the same time, we spent some time discussing outreach efforts such as a community survey to find out what folks that live and work in Glencoe think about the issues that we are talking about, thinking about, and find, you know, just sort of, so we get, we get a baseline of what people think right now. And we hope that will guide us in terms of future presentations and actions. But a lot of people are meeting with various folks, although right now during the holidays, of course, that's a little bit more muted because it's difficult to do so. We also spent some time talking about the NPR article that aired that featured Glencoe and talked about that. And we're having some follow-up about that.
I unmuted it.
Yeah, but then you want to raise your hand so they know you're ready to talk.
Bob, I think you should talk now.
Oh, I'm, I'm back on now, huh? Well, hi to all of you. I especially thank you, Larry, for this recognition of my 70 years as a member of the Glencoe Rotary Club. Rotary is sponsored, as probably you all know, lots of benevolent projects, both in our community and around the world. Well, for me, Glencoe is a great place to live and work. Glencoe always had civic-minded village board members and long-tenured, competent, service-oriented staff. And it's been well-known around the country for its innovations and progressive local government. That's about as much as you want to hear from me, Larry. I think I spent about 400 board meetings in the council chamber where you are. I haven't counted up the number of hours, but it's, it's a lot and I enjoyed every bit of it. So thank you very much for giving me this very, very special recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you for all that you've done. I have to say, I grew up in the Glencoe that you created when you were village manager, first year and going. And so I owe all of my public services throughout my life and my time as president to the fact that I had somebody that taught me what it was like to have a great village, meaning you. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Gary, you're back on.
Okay. Well, I was, I was virtually done in any event. The, our next meeting is Wednesday, the 6th of January. I encourage anyone with an interest, please come, participate in our meeting, listen in to our meeting. And I also want to make note that Sharon does a great job of helping us stay on track and getting things done and follow up and producing an excellent set of detailed minutes of all of our meetings, which are on the village's website. So for those that want more details, please call me. Happy to discuss. And also I would encourage you to read the minutes that Sharon puts together. They're really, they're really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, you're, you're up at bat with the village managers' report.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks. I've got just a few items on my report and I'm actually not going to say that much this evening. I'm going to have staff do the majority of these reports. But the first is an update on the upcoming COVID-19 vaccinations that are getting started. Obviously, we're all familiar with the fact that the news and we're seeing, of the news that we're seeing now, two vaccines that are making their way to Illinois. The first is a Pfizer vaccine that has started, actually vaccinations have, have gotten underway. Second is a Moderna vaccine that is, was just approved today. I'm going to have Public Safety Director Carrie Lewandowski give just a brief overview of the distribution plans as we understand them at this time and then to answer any questions that anyone may have on the subject. So Carrie?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corrali. As you all know, initial shipments of the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine are being delivered to the state of Illinois this week. State health officials expect to receive a total of 109,000 doses of this vaccine. They're in the first wave. According to the state's distribution plan, which is based on guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, healthcare workers and residents of long-term care facilities will be the first in line for the COVID-19 vaccine. healthcare workers and residents of long term care facilities will be the first in line for the COVID nineteen vaccine. Here in Cook County, health department officials received twenty thousand doses as part of this first round of vaccine distribution. In line with the state's distribution plan, Cook County is taking a phased approach to COVID nineteen vaccination, focusing its initial efforts on healthcare workers who are at the highest risk of exposure to the virus, along with long term care facility residents and staff. They estimate that this initial phase will be completed within the next two to three weeks. The initial vaccine doses have been allocated to fifteen suburban Cook County hospitals based on the number of essential personnel and severity of COVID nineteen impact in their service areas. According to projections, it will be at least three to six months before the vaccine will be available to the general population. In the meantime, the Illinois Department of Public Health is asking people to be patient and reminds that the vaccine will not end this pandemic immediately. They are urging people to continue to wear masks, wash their hands and maintain social distance even after being vaccinated. Here in Glencoe, the Public Safety Department is working with the Cook County Department of Public Health and Highland Park Hospital to plan for vaccination rollout to our community. As it stands today, the first group to be vaccinated in this area includes high risk healthcare workers, which includes first responders who are EMTs or paramedics. Since all of our officers are EMTs or paramedics, our officers will likely be in this first group. Of course, this can change due to uncertainties regarding the quantity of vaccines that will be available on our area. In fact, just yesterday, I'm sure you're all aware that we reported that Illinois will be receiving fifty percent of what they were expecting over the next couple of weeks. Public safety staff will continue to coordinate with the state and county officials as the vaccine becomes more widely available. At this time, it appears that when the vaccine is made available to the general population, the vaccine will be provided through doctors' offices, clinics and retail pharmacies. Again, this likely won't be possible for another three to six months. I'd like to conclude by reiterating the message that the CDC and local health experts have been providing to the public. The vaccine is the first step in a long process and phased approach to provide the COVID nineteen vaccine to Illinois residents. Recipients of the vaccine are being prioritized based on risk of infection. And those metrics will vary as the vaccine is rolled out over the coming months. Please be patient and understand that the vaccine will not eliminate COVID nineteen immediately, nor does it increase, nor does it create instant immunity. I urge everyone to continue to wear a mask, wash hands frequently, avoid large group and maintain social distancing until directed otherwise. We'll continue to share information on the village website, and you could also find up to date information on the CDC, Illinois Department of Public Health or Cook County Department of Public Health websites. That is my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, anyone for Carrie? Okay, back to you, Phil.
All right, and we will continue to share information with the community on the vaccination plans as we are, as we are given that information. And we will be posting it to the to the village's website as well as sharing it through our social media and e-news platforms. Another item that I wanted to provide a brief update on relates to the fact that we've received several several questions from residents over the last few weeks as water bills have gone out regarding water bills that appear to be higher than usual. While we've developed information and shared it through the village's various social media outlets, we've also put it in e-news now a couple of times. I've asked Public Works Director Dave Mao and Finance Director Nikki Larson to share a brief presentation with with that information about what is causing some of these higher water bills this year. And again, to to be able to answer any questions that you may have. I think, Dave, you're going to get started with this one.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Wanted to talk about three areas together with Director Larson, water usage, water meters and utility billing and how those three are interrelated at this time. Just some some general comments to not only to the board but to the public that may be listening regarding usage. You know, water usage or consumption is tracked and totaled in total in quarterly increments. And typically that the summer quarter, June, July and August is the highest consumption as a result of water used to irrigate landscaping and lawns. So one thing we run into regularly, it's really, it's important for for people looking at a bill and wondering about why it's 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 moved the needle is to to compare consumption for the same quarters from from year to year. Secondly, most irrigation systems are equipped with automation, either timers or sensors to regulate watering frequency and duration. That's important because significant swings in weather, either an extremely hot and dry summer or versus a wet, wet year above with above average rainfalls makes a significant difference in residential water usage. Other sources for increased water usage are older inefficient plumbing fixtures and toilets, leaks that may develop in water lines or plumbing fixtures inside a house. And even, and we we have several hundred in town, the filling and maintaining of swimming pools, if not managed accordingly. The Water Division staff and Public Works performs all the water meter, water meter reads in the village. And the same crew are the ones that maintain meters, water mains and and the water plant operations. So this same staff works with any utility customer with questions or concerns about water usage. So there's some continuity there. Just a brief comment about the year twenty twenty and and how that's impacted usage. We had a much drier summer as as trustee Hallwax reported earlier this year than in twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen actually was the third wettest year on record in Illinois. So a drier summer translates to much more water used to irrigate and landscape lawns. Twenty twenty was also unique in in that many more people were working from home, whether it be work or school due to the pandemic. This translates more than people will ever know to more water use for flushing toilets, hand washing, cooking, laundry, et cetera. The increased usage in twenty twenty is confirmed by the fact that the Glencoe Water Plant has produced and pumped twenty percent more water to date this year. That that's a total of a hundred million gallons more water compared to the same time last year. The water is getting produced and pumped out of the plant. It it stands to reason that we're going to see a higher consumption at the at the customer level. And then lastly, a count about water meters, we've talked regularly about updates on our water meter replacement program. What prompted the priority to move forward with meter replacement this year was underperforming meters. Some of the older meters were not registering all usage. So meter replacement continues to be critical to to the, not only the villages, the health of the village's water utility, but accurate and reliable usage data. The new water, the new smart water meters that are being installed, they transmit readings wirelessly and that usage is delivered to the village utility for processing. And this technology will ensure fair and accurate water billing and provide customers with greater access to their water usage data through any particular billing period. The new meter technology provides the village access to monitor high water use and 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 for specific property and identify potential leaks. In fact, just this month, the early stages of a new meter, this has already been put to test. We were able to communicate with an out of town resident who was able to send someone over to his house and discover a a running toilet that was using over twenty five hundred gallons a day. It's through through the, through the technology of the software with the meters. To date, we've got over seventy five percent of the new meters have been replaced. So we're we're moving along at a very healthy, steady clip, and the village is hoping to complete all meter replacements by early in twenty twenty one. So with that, I'd hand this off to Director Larson that could talk a little bit about utility billing.
Thank you, Director Mao. So we've certainly made a lot of changes this year. And in addition to the change out of the water meters village wide, the village also just went live with a new utility billing software as a component of our ERP system. So as part of these changes, there were several modifications to the bill. Our residents received new account numbers. There was a new bill online payment portal that was launched. And we also changed the unit of measure for billing from cubic feet to gallons. This has caused a little bit of confusion in terms of trying to compare past bills with current bills. So we've posted quite a bit of information on the village's website to help residents translate this. But we do encourage folks to call us if they do have questions because we have been working with individuals on a one on one basis. So this has also led to some, a little bit of of changes here. Each year, as part of the budget process, the village does typically approve water rate increases. Especially in recent years, we have been following recommendations as put forth with the village's water rate analysis. This was completed in twenty eighteen to support the existing water production and distribution system and ensure that we had funds available to maintain that system into the future. So this can also lead to increases in your bill year over year. Again, we've provided a lot of information on the village's website. Each residence situation can vary, so we would encourage folks to give us a call. Please call the finance department, we will work with the public works department to determine if there is an issue at your home. And we will help you compare previous usage to current usage. And we're happy to answer any additional questions on any of these changes.
The only thing I'd add to to both of those reports is just to underscore what what Director Larson just said. We do encourage people, if they have questions about their bill, to simply reach out to to the finance department. We are happy to walk through individual usage. We've been sharing, you know, upwards of ten years of history with some of our residents who who are questioning how their bill could be what it has been. And and what they're, what we're often finding is that their last year was a really low usage year. And when you look back over a series of years, you find that usage this year wasn't that far off from some of their historical water usage. So it it is an important thing for people to to reach out. And we're happy to to meet individually and talk through those. It it's difficult to answer questions in the aggregate, and sometimes that's what happens when questions get posted to social media. And the village does not monitor Nextdoor, for instance, and can't monitor Nextdoor for questions that pop up. So we do want people to to reach out directly.
Okay. Did you have more for on your report?
The only thing I wanted to add this evening is just just an announcement relative to the holiday schedule here at the village hall. Obviously, village hall is still open for limited hours. However, on Christmas Eve, which is a week from today, the twenty fourth, will be closing at noon. And then we are closed on Christmas Day. The following week, New Year's Eve, will be the same thing, will be closing at noon on New Year's Eve. And will be closed on New Year's Day. Garbage collection on Thursdays will be as normal. On Friday, those garbage collection days will move to Saturday. So if your, if your normal garbage collection day is on Friday, please put that out on Saturday morning and it'll be collected that day. The last thing I want to say is just to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I think we're all looking to twenty twenty one with hope in our eyes, and I certainly am. I'm very relieved to see a vaccine, multiple vaccines making their way into into our our communities. But to underscore what we heard from Public Safety Director Lewandowski, please don't, please don't stop doing the things that we've been doing so well, which is wearing masks, being mindful of group gatherings, especially with holidays ahead of us. Please do keep that in in mind. And as you are, if you are out and about, please do remember to shop Glencoe first. We are working closely with our with our business community and trying all we can to to remind our community about how important it is to support our businesses. And and frankly, our town has done a great job of that through the pandemic and just encourage everyone to keep it up. And so thank you, wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday.
Thank you. The first order of business in the president's report is consideration of an extension of the village president's declaration of emergency. The current declaration of emergency is set to expire at the adjournment of tonight's meeting. It is recommended that the declaration expiration be extended. And so I would like to entertain a motion to approve the extension until the adjournment of the next regular special or emergency meeting of the village board of trustees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. The next order of business on the agenda is my reappointment of John Statter to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Zoning Commission. If there's no discussion, may I have a motion to confirm Mr. Statter's reappointment?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Excellent. Our next order of business is consideration of a proclamation which I consider to be very important, and it reads as follows. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior was a transformational and compassionate civil rights leader that worked tirelessly to advance equality and human rights for all people. And whereas Dr. King, a man of great principle, devoted his life to fostering meaningful change and achieving justice for African Americans, the economically disadvantaged and the oppressed. And whereas Dr. King changed hearts, minds and souls during the Civil Rights Movement through his fundamental belief that a person's worth ought not to be measured by their skin color or culture, but rather by the quality of their character. Whereas Dr. King's moving legacy has inspired millions of individuals both near and across the globe to continue progressing his quest for mutual respect and peace. And whereas for nearly forty years, our nation has proudly recognized Doctor King's day of birth with a national day of remembrance each January. And whereas members of the Glencoe community have gone honored Dr. King's profound societal impact, notably through the Saint Paul AME Church's annual celebration of Dr. King's life. And whereas the village of Glencoe stands with Dr. King's efforts and ideals through policies against any and all discrimination and other ways of expression such as the village's welcoming and inclusive community pledge. And whereas the village of Glencoe joins villages, cities and states across the country, calling upon their communities to commemorate Dr. King in twenty twenty one through acts of service and volunteerism on Monday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty one and throughout the year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village president and board of trustees of the village of Glencoe do hereby proclaim Monday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty one as Martin Luther King Junior Day in the village of Glencoe. All residents are urged to honor Dr. King's life and legacy through the promotion of justice and equality for all people. May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation, please?
So moved.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
An enthusiastic yes.
An enthusiastic yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to wish all the residents of our community that they have a very healthy and happy holidays and that they and their families enjoy good health and a good year to come in 2021. And to remind our community and urge and second what Phil said, this is an important time to support all of our local businesses. And if you have shopping and things you need to do, they're working very hard to do things over the phone, pick up, all sorts of things. But to support our local businesses and our local restaurants, because we want, as the pandemic goes away, which we hope it will as we're getting the vaccine, we want to maintain the fact that we have a very strong and healthy community, business community. And I would also like to say a word to second very strongly Kerry Lewandowski's admonition to all of us, while we have a vaccine that is on the way and we hope that we will see 2021 bring the end to this pandemic. It is important whether or not you've gotten the vaccine or not, that we do what we've done so far very, very well in Glencoe. Remember that we really do have to try and social distance, whether we're out on the sidewalk or whether we're going into a store to buy something or getting a cup of coffee. And we need to remember it's very important under all of these circumstances to wear, continue to wear masks. And even though it's been a long time and we're getting fatigued, it's important that we pay attention and do that. And that we regularly wash our hands, because there's nothing that contributes more than making sure that people don't get it. Than making sure that you've kept cleanliness and kept your hands washed as well as keeping social distancing and wearing masks. And try to not have large gatherings, try to keep those distances so that we can get to a better year next year. So with all of that strongly in mind, I wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, which is upon us. Our next regular village board meeting is currently scheduled for Thursday, January 21st, 2021. That brings us to the consent agenda. And since this is a virtual meeting, for clarity purposes, I'm going to ask Manager Corrali to read the titles of the items that are on our consent agenda. Bill, could you do that now, please?
Certainly, President Levin. Item 6A is the November 2020 Village Treasures Report and Glencoe Golf Club Financial Report. Item B, November 2020 Check Register for the Village of Glencoe and Glencoe Golf Club. Item C, Ratification of the November 2020 Early Check Register List. Item D, Consideration of the 2021 Village Board Committee and Commission Meetings Calendar. Item E, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending Village Code Chapter 21A Sewer Use and User Charge, changing the applicable unit of measure from 100 cubic feet to 1,000 gallons. Item F, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement with North Shore Area Municipalities for Snow Removal Personnel to Respond to Snow Emergencies During the COVID-19 Emergency. Item G, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing Change Order Number Two to Amend the Duration of the Village's Contract with Plant and Moran, PLLC, for Enterprise Resource Planning System Implementation Support Through December 31st, 2021. Item H, Consideration of a Resolution Approving a New GIS Consortium Service Provider Contract and Statement of Work for Professional Staffing Services with Municipal GIS Partners for GIS Support Services for 2021 for a total cost not to exceed $62,324. Item I, Consideration of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Campbell and Company for Phase Three Fundraising Consulting Services for Friends of the Glencoe Golf Club. Finally, Item J, Consideration of an Ordinance Loving Taxes for the Washington Place Special Service Area for Tax Year 2020.
Do any of the trustees want to take anything off of the consent list or do you have any questions with respect to the consent list? If not, may I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to item seven, our regular business, the first item on that is consideration of the 2020 tax levy for the village of Glencoe and the Glencoe Public Library. Nikki, would you explain to us what's involved in this?
Yes, thank you, President Levin. So as you noted, consideration, item A is consideration of the 2020 tax levy, which is for taxes that will be collected in calendar year 21. As you may recall, we did have a public hearing on the tax levy at our last meeting on November 19th, 2020. And notice of this hearing was published in the Glencoe Anchor in accordance with statutes on October 29th. The total levy that's before you this evening for your approval includes the village and the Glencoe Public Library levy. And the subtotal of those two levies is $13,356,122, which is approximately 2.9% more than last year's extension. When we include the debt service levy, the overall levy increases by 271,000. And the reason for that is we did have a bond issue fall off this year. So the actual debt service levy is actually going down by 5.2%. The debt service levy is not included in the tax levy ordinance that's before you for your approval, because when we do issue bonds, that debt service levy is attached with the bond ordinance. So we do not need to do that every year. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions on the tax levy as proposed.
Trustee Hallwax, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Gail, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Barbara Miller?
I just wanted to bid a fond farewell to our first and only stub year. Other than that, no questions.
Given the pandemic, I don't know that I'll be sorry to see it go.
No, not so fond. You're right.
Peter Mulvaney, any questions?
Oh, sorry.
Gary Rubin, any thoughts or questions?
No, thank you.
Jonathan Vrie.
No questions, thanks.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. The next order of business is a public hearing on and consideration of an ordinance making appropriations for corporate purposes of the village of Glencoe for calendar year beginning January 1, 2021 and ending December 31st, 2021. After I open the public hearing, I'm going to ask Finance Director Nikki Larson to present not only the subject that I just mentioned, the consideration, the ordinance on the appropriation, but also to present on items 7C through 7E at the same time, being the annual budget, the ordinance amending the comprehensive fee and fine schedule, and the ordinance approving the calendar year 2021 expenditures for multi-year contracts. Since all of these items relate to the village's calendar year, first calendar year, 2021 budget. And so since they're interrelated, it makes sense to present on all of them at the same time. So at this point, I will open the public meeting and ask Finance Director Nikki Larson to present on items B through E on our agenda. Items 7B through E.
Thank you, President Levin. As noted, the items that we will go through during the hearing include the appropriations ordinance, the ordinance adopting the budget, the fee and fine schedule, and the resolution approving multi-year contracts, items B through E. Item B, the appropriations ordinance is for calendar year 2021. This ordinance sets the maximum legal spending limit for the village and it is based on 110% of the proposed budget. This notice of the appropriations hearing was published as required by statute in the Chicago Sun-Times on December 3rd, 2020. As you see the summary here from left to right, there is a summary by fund. This represents expenditures only as required by statute and also includes the Glencoe Public Library. So this column here in the center represents those items that are included in the budget ordinance for your authorization. And the column all the way to the right includes all of the appropriations, which is approximately 110% of budget. As a reminder, the appropriations limit does represent the village's legal limit of spending. However, if we do exceed the budget, the board policy is for staff to come back before you and request permission for that. And we will be going through several budget amendments in the current year after this hearing. Item C includes the adoption of the 2021 budget. As noted, this is our first calendar year budget. It does feel like it's been going on for the entirety of the stub year, but we did start this process in August with a financial policy review, moving on into September into the financial forecast that was modified several times, given the nature of this year. And finally, the draft budget and the community investment plan was reviewed in detail in October and we rounded out discussions with additional CIP and debt discussions in November. As presented, the budget includes $28 million in revenue and 29 million in expenditures. The numbers before you have been updated to reflect the golf club fundraising contract that was just approved on the consent agenda. And the total, when including statutorily included or statutorily controlled pension funds, raises those numbers to 31.9 in revenue and 32.5 in expenditures. And again, those are statutorily controlled, so there's very little that the village can do to change those numbers. Included with the budget is the 10-year community investment plan. That includes $51.7 million in planned expenditures in the areas of infrastructure, repair and replacement and vehicle replacement with 3.6 million proposed specifically in calendar year 2021. This slide shows a brief summary of the budget by fund. Again, there is more detail included in the village's final budget that is available on the village's website. And within this packet, there is a link to it. But most importantly here, the thing I want to point out to everyone is that with the proposed fund balance, we are projecting fund balance within our two major operating funds to be at or above our fund balance policy. So very healthy budget proposed. And for item D, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Finance Director Joseph to briefly review the fee and fine schedule changes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. So item here, D, is the fee and fine schedule. The proposed increases to the existing rates are limited to those fees, as we have stated the last board meeting, have a direct impact on ensuring there are sufficient funding for future infrastructure improvements. The budget does include an 8% increase for water rates. And as we have stated, this is in line with the water rate analysis that was completed in fiscal year 2018. The increase ensures continued reinvestment into our distribution system. Also included is a 5% increase to fund a portion of infrastructure improvements for sanitary sewer rates. The general collection service fee, the budget includes a 2.3% increase. This is consistent with the 12-month change in CPI that is used for the property tax levy. And then lastly, also included here is the golf club rates. This includes a dynamic pricing that offers minimum and maximum rates. A detailed breakdown of those rates is included in your packet this evening. The following are recommended new fees that staff has identified as areas for process improvements as well as an effort to defray some of the administrative cost. The downtown right-of-way use fee, this would be a permit fee for permission to place equipment such as dumpsters in the public right-of-way in the downtown business district for repairs of commercial buildings. This fee structure is based on a number of hours and days and will range from $100 to $500 plus. The plant commission appearance review staff here has proposed a $100 application fee. This proposed fee provides some consistency in the village's process as there is currently a fee in place for the zoning board of appeals application as well. Alterations to approved architectural and engineering plans, staff here is proposing a flat fee of $150 plus $75 every hour of staff review time. This is after the initial two hours. This fee is intended to recover some of the expense when previously approved plans are revised. And then lastly, residential development tree removal and preservation plan fee. Staff here is proposing a fee ranging from 300 to 500. Currently, this service is provided by a third-party consultant. So staff here is looking to recover a portion of that cost. And then for future reviews, we will provide additional analysis in 2021 on business license regulations. This is a strategic plan initiative. In addition, a more thorough analysis will be conducted on management fees, both for the golf club and the waterfront, just to be sure that we're adequately recovering in the actual cost of administrative services that are provided. And then lastly, just a reminder, the 1% non-home rule places of eating tax that was deferred earlier this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic will go into effect on January 1st. And moving on to item E, the multi-year contracts. The village's municipal code and the adopted purchasing policy requires board approval of all procurements if the total amount of the purchase is $25,000 or greater. All other procurements are completed through the village manager's purchasing authority and compliance with the policy. Whether or not contracts are presented for board approval, every effort is made by staff to ensure transparency as all payments made to our service providers appear on the monthly board approved check registers, which is on the consent agenda. As part of the budget process, annually, staff completes a review of the village's contract renewals and vendor payments and develops this consolidated list of routine service contracts that are paid to vendors in aggregate, which exceed the $25,000 threshold. While contracts exceeding $25,000 are approved by the board when the contract is first executed, there are various contracts for services and supplies that span multiple fiscal years that do not return to the board on an annual basis if the scope of work has not changed. Included in your packet this evening is a resolution authorizing payments to routine contracts such as engineering services, IT-related services, as well as other professional services. Funds are included in the calendar year 2021 budget to accommodate these services. And at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Finance Director Larson.
Thank you, Assistant Finance Director Joseph. At this point, we'd be happy to answer any questions on items B through E.
Okay, Trustee Hallwax, any questions?
This is nothing different than we reviewed Tuesday, right?
Right.
Then no questions.
Gail Listener, Trustee Listener, any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Trustee Miller?
No questions.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yeah, sorry, I was not at Tuesday's meeting. I have a couple of questions about the fees. When was the fee for right-of-way expediting and the removal of equipment? And I was just curious why that's defined as a downtown activity and not system-wide for right-of-way? And that's my first question, I guess, a little more understanding on that definition. And the second was the tree preservation fee. If I could get a little explanation of that, that's a fee for the owner of the property. And it's a little confusing the way it's worded, as it's a preservation plan involved with the cutting down of the tree. So if the idea is that those fees support a preservation of the canopy, I would just like to better understand that, if you don't mind.
Dave Mau could respond to those, Dave, would you please?
Certainly. With regard to the fee for downtown impacted the right-of-way in the downtown, we already have provisions in place for the public right-of-way out in the residential districts. Trustee Mulvaney, this, this is more pointed at to formalize a process that's probably been too informal historically. And that's, and that's maintenance and contract work in and around the downtown that requires scaffolding, dumpsters, and the like. And the sole intent here is to try to expedite that work, minimize the impact. Oftentimes, that blocks, impacts public sidewalk and parking in the downtown. It's not, not intended to be a major revenue producer, but incent a more expedited scheduling and completion of maintenance work. With respect to the recovering of of tree review costs, we, we have since, since the retirement of a longtime village forester, we, we've adopted and used an outside service to assist with plan review and then post-development review tree, tree preservation and protection plans primarily for residential development. And so this is an important function that helps oftentimes, you know, our tree preservation ordinance controls what trees can and can't be affected on a property. And if they are being impacted for, due to construction, due to a legitimate tree impact activity, there's a cost related to that. This, this brings a credentialed arborist out to be able to evaluate a plan, oftentimes make recommendations for additional tree protection. We've also been successful to urge and encourage even reorienting certain development on a property to, to save or preserve a landmark tree. And so, so this is just an effort, because this oftentimes with, with complicated projects involves multiple hours of, of third-party review. This is just an effort to recover those third-party expenses.
Thank you. So in the first case, the intent is to reduce the time in which this type of maintenance equipment is disrupting the right-of-way in the downtown area. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Recognizing that in many cases that work, that right-of-way does need to be occupied to perform tuck pointing, window replacement, sign installation, to name a few, rooftop mechanical replacement. But it, it, the intent is to provide a vehicle to identify a fee to it and, and a graduated fee schedule if, if what what we often find is what initially is two or three days of a dumpster on a street ends up being a week or more.
Yeah. So of course, we don't want to discourage any of that maintenance. And so the fee is appropriate, you feel appropriate. And we don't give them a pass first two days for free. After that, you start paying. That, that would maybe reduce any deterrent. But really, really, we can recover the costs if they go beyond something that, that seems reasonable for the task at hand. Because I understand that we are, it's a blanket fee for that time of use in the right-of-way. So the, the other item on the trees, I'm just, that, that's intended to recover costs, not to support the management of the existing village canopy. That's a cost recovery fee?
That's correct. For, for residential, residential development, correct.
Thanks for the explanation.
Okay, Trustee Rubin?
No questions, thank you.
Trustee Bree?
No questions, thanks.
Okay. If, if we don't have any further questions or comments, I would like a motion to close the, well, before I close the public hearing. Jordan Lester, have there been any public comments that were on this item?
President Levin, we did not receive any public comment.
Thank you. In view of that, may I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwack?
Yes.
Trustee Listener?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Bree?
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion then to approve and adopt the resolutions in items 7B through E that we had before us and we're just explaining?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Trustee Rubin moved, Trustee Miller seconded.
Good, thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwack?
Yes.
Trustee Listener?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yeah.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Bree?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is 7F, consideration of a supplemental appropriation ordinance and corresponding budget amendment for the stub year 2020, beginning March 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020. Nikki, could you please explain that to us?
Absolutely, thank you. So as noted earlier and was discussed at length, this certainly has been an unprecedented year. And although the village does make every effort to create a budget spending plan that covers what we would anticipate for the year, there is always something unexpected that comes up. So in accordance with the village's financial policies, we have started amending the budget to recognize these issues in an effort to be transparent in those items that have arisen, that were different than what we anticipated. So we do require a budget amendment in accordance with the village's financial policies. And with that become, comes also supplemental appropriations. You'll notice that the chart on the left is slightly different than the chart on the right. The budget amendment summary includes the net impact, including increases in revenue that came in higher than what we anticipated, and also increases to expenditure line items that came in greater than expected. Primarily in the water fund, the large driver there is the anticipated repairs that will be made to the Skokie Lagoon main that we've also discussed at length. In the police pension fund, we do try to anticipate what expenditures will occur from retirements as best as we can. Sometimes those are higher than what we expect. On the left, these appropriations, as I mentioned earlier, this is only the expenditure sides. And these are not reduced by any revenue because there is not revenue included in the supplemental appropriations ordinance. So together, there is a reconciliation included in the packet that shows how these two net together, as well as a detailed outline of all of the amendments that were made and why. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions on any of those.
Trustee Hallwack, do you have any questions?
Questions.
Gail Listener, do you have any? Trusty listener?
No, no questions.
Trustee Miller?
No questions for me.
Trustee Mulvaney?
No.
Trustee Rubin?
None, thank you.
Trustee Bree?
No questions.
May I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwack?
Yes.
Trustee Listener?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Bree?
Yes.
Okay. The last item, 7G, is an ordinance providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing general obligation bonds to the voters of the Village of Glencoe, Hook County, Illinois, at the consolidated election to be held on the sixth day of April, 2021. So this is the bond issue that we're talking about for construction. It's been in all the budgets in there. Nikki, do you want to explain to us what that's all about?
Yes, thank you, President Levin. As trustee mentioned earlier in the meeting, as part of the finance committee discussions on the budget, we do review the community investment program and the associated financing plan that goes along with that. As part of the discussion, as we mentioned earlier, the tenure plan includes 51.7 million in capital improvements with 3.6 million in 2021 alone. Over the next three years, we anticipate there being approximately 10 million in infrastructure and repair and replacement needs. And as part of the discussions on the budget, we did receive direction at both finance committee and committee, the whole discussions, to move forward with a request from the community to issue general obligation bonds to help us fund these infrastructure needs. If approved this evening, this question before you on the slide and also included in the packet will appear on the April 2021 ballot for voter consideration. And this would include repairs and infrastructure replacements in the areas of storm sewer, sanitary sewer, street resurfacing, and sidewalk. Director Mao will go through these in a moment. But as you recall from our discussions, this is the basis of where we started from in terms of determining the need for general obligation bond funding. And these are the general categories that are in our community investment program summary. And the summary of funding at the bottom includes general obligation bonds, alternate revenue bonds, and fund reserves. This is a fluid document. This is the basis for the discussion, but it certainly changes the more we discuss the realities and the options for funding and various priorities for different projects. And this is included in detail, along with the full 10-year plan summary and detail in the budget document. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Director Mao to provide a little bit more detail on the proposed projects that we would be including in this $10 million issue.
Yes, there, as, as you see in the breakdown on this slide, there are, there are five, five main areas where the proposed bonds, bond funding would be allocated. And these are all, hopefully not, not new to the board. These are all regular entries in our CIP program, with the exception of the street resurfacing. And we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute. On the sanitary sewer side, this is, these improvements are the ongoing engineering review investigation of the MWRD's mandated infiltration and inflow control program requirements that are all geared towards reducing, you know, stormwater from entering into the sanitary system. The, the investigative work ultimately identifies various defects then that are addressed through primarily three, three methods of rehabilitation, manhole rehabilitation, point repairs in, in the main lines, and sanitary sewer lining. And, and that's work that's been ongoing. We, as outlined in the CIP, we have an obligation to address a certain percentage of the year, every year, under the MWRD's program. The second area, and a large component of this, is, is storm sewer improvements. And, and this is our ongoing effort to address stormwater needs and increased capacity of the existing storm sewer system in specifically in targeted areas where we've, we've experienced recurring and severe street and right-of-way flooding that affects private property. Drainage basin areas that are under engineering review currently and would, would be part of components of this, of this, this funding and stormwater include drainage basins at the south end of Green Bay Road near Linden Avenue. The, the west end of South Avenue, Washington Avenue, and Washington Place, that's an area that we're, is understudied presently. The board may recall, you approved that, that engineering study earlier this stub year. And we will be bringing back the results of that early in 2021. And then a third area is the intersection area of Vernon and Sunset, particularly the, the block of Sunset to the west of Vernon. Additionally, storm sewer outfall improvements are included in the, in the 10-year CIP, one of which is at the south end of Longwood Avenue. That's one. The board may recall, we, we had the designed improvement and, and just, and our, our funding fell short in 2018 to do that work. And that will be evaluated in conjunction with potential sanitary sewer upgrades in that same ravine area. And that, and that's an area that is on our, on the drawing boards to be reviewed in 2021. The third area sidewalks, that's ongoing residential sidewalk replacement program, as well as the installation of new sidewalk to fill key gaps in the existing sidewalk network. This is, and implement other pedestrian safety improvements. Both of those are, are as identified in the village's active transportation plan. A street resurfacing, we, the village invested heavily in comprehensive street improvement program from 1990 to 2005. Those, those improvements included a combination of full reconstruction, 100% replacement, in many cases, installation of curb where there never was curb, storm sewer improvements. And, and that work, that good work done in that 15-year period has, has held up well. The, the improvement that, that were, will be, would be part of this bond issue is, is a maintenance street resurfacing. That's the, that's the improvement that's needed on the surface 12 to 15 years after, after that asphalt is initially laid. It's far less invasive. The dollars go a lot farther, and it's just intended to improve the, the safety and the function of the street surface. It would be important to note, too, that these funds would be, would be partnered with MFT and Rebuild Illinois funds that have been accumulating. We're looking at a significant inventory of streets that have not been resurfaced since, you know, since the early, early part of 2007 or 2008. And many of our street locations where we've completed utility improvements in the last 10 years, namely water main improvements and some of the major storm sewer improvements, as you may recall, did not include full curb-to-curb resurfacing as part of those improvements. For, for reasons, we, we'd like to see those improvements function for several years, any settlement that may occur from a trench. Have all that happen before we, we come in and, and do a curb-to-curb resurface. So we've got a, we've got a significant inventory of streets and, and see these dollars being paired up on probably a significant resurfacing program in back-to-back years. And then, and then lastly, a smaller allotment for street lighting. We've got one final phase of, of village-owned and maintained lights along Old Green Bay Road. As you recall, we've, we've upgraded the three, three commuter parking lots. We've got- upgraded the three, three commuter parking lots. We've got plans to look at at least upgrades to to those lights, as well as potentially having a having a funding source for for new street lighting in some underserved residential neighborhoods. We we regularly hear from from certain subdivision areas and streets where where there's a lack of presence of our standard commed street lighting placement. And so we those those are no longer simple and cost-free efforts through commed. And so we we would consider a portion of this being a lot allocated to to evaluating and engineering potential lighting and upgrades in some some of the residential areas. With that, I'm happy to answer any question on any any one or all of those those CIP categories.
So Hallwax, any questions?
Yes. Nikki, you said it's 10 years or sorry, 10 million over how many years was this planned for?
Over three years.
Okay. And with regard to where rates are now relative to recent years, is this still a rather opportune environment, given where interest rates are, and particularly thinking of our last bond sale?
We do believe that this would still be an opportune time to borrow. That being said, it's difficult to say where we'll be six months from now. I think we've seen this year, the market volatility has just been all over the place. So we've been talking with our financial advisor. We do think that we'll still have an advantageous raise, especially with the continued AAA rating and GO bonds generally command a lower interest rate. So we do think that it may be a smart idea to to borrow now. We've we've typically, the credit rating agencies will review us each time we borrow. And if we if there is a year that we do not borrow, they will typically do an annual evaluation. That's a little bit less scope.
So we're gonna have to get another rating review in six months?
Correct.
Trustee Hallwax, I just want to clarify that your question before when you asked about the duration, were you were you referencing the payback period? Or were you referencing the construction timeframe?
I was thinking construction, but as long as we're talking about the financing, how long to the if we were at the referendum for the 10 million, and what's then what's the duration of these bonds?
They would likely be 20-year bonds. I mean, they would be laddered. But as a whole, they would be a 20-year bond. Because we're talking about major infrastructure improvements that have longer lives.
So obviously, we're going to be have to be very conscious of our AAA rating over the next six months, I assume, right?
Correct. And although a bond referendum would authorize us to issue bonds, it does not obligate us. So if interest rates aren't ideal at a point where we're ready to go to market, we can certainly wait.
And it will come back to the board when we actually go to market.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. So I have.
Thank you. Gail Listener, trustee Listener, do you have any questions?
I guess my only question was just in terms of the the wording of the referendum question. And I was just wondering kind of how the 6% interest rate was selected as the number that we're using on the question.
That's an excellent question. And I should I failed to mention this when we were on this slide. So this referendum question was prepared by the village's bond council through our bond attorney. And essentially, they place a worst case scenario interest rate in the bond referendum. If we were to borrow a higher than 6%, it would be awful. I mean, if we're even in the realm of 6%, that's going to be a bad, bad time to borrow. But this is really just a worst case scenario that they're required to enter.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering from the point of view of maybe a casual observer in the public looking at this and saying, what?
Trustee Listener, I I I debate with bond council on this one every in every single town. I hate it. I mean, when you're trying to pass something, I I I've tried to insert it in worst case in perens.
Yeah.
Which I, you know, would be glad they they get very upset. I get in battles with them. But you know, ultimately, they have to issue the opinion.
I will say, trustee Listener, just just one other point. This language has been in the villages, I think, the last three referendum questions. I didn't believe it until I went back and looked, because I said the same thing to Director Larson, why on earth do we have to have this number in there? And she said, we've had it in before. I said, I'm going to look that up. And she was right. So the the actually 6% has been in the last three bond referendum questions.
The interest rates are probably lower now than they were for your for those referendums.
Correct.
Yeah, I just think we probably need to kind of educate the public a little bit, you know, and the background of the wording or or something, just because I my only concern is somebody's going to look at that and
The other discussion that I had in another town, and we're at a point where I don't know that we can do anything tonight. But Phil, if that was the case, at 6%, we could make the argument to bond council that 6% compared to the rate that was in effect at the time, what let's use that same delta here, which would maybe be 3%. But I if we don't adopt, if the village board doesn't adopt this tonight, we run the we won't be able to get it on the agenda.
We can't, right. And the one thing I will say is that the village has done a very good job. And we will again, in terms of creating a public information document that outlines the scope of the projects included in the referendum question, we can certainly include educational language related to the language of the question itself within the parameters that both the village council and bond council will allow us. So we will, we will be able to provide information to the community as to what that 6% means.
Okay, thank you.
When we went through the recession and everything, we had language that was just as absurd in terms of the interest rate, because bond council are extremely conservative, and our residents are fairly used to that. And, you know, we would probably think it was high if we were going to pay 1% if we went to market today.
Two of the most prominent bond councils in the city, actually, our residents of Glencoe.
So I I don't anticipate this being a problem, but we have to prove it today if we're going to be able to actually get it on the April ballot.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Barbara Miller, do you have any questions? Trustee Miller?
No questions. Thanks.
Trustee Mulvaney?
I'd just like to clarify that as we move forward with the streets shaping, that there's an opportunity to evaluate just where and which streets receive these improvements. And we have already identified that particular schedule.
Trustee Mulvaney, that is absolutely something that we will be able to provide more clarity to the to the board on. And I would anticipate that likely if the referendum passes, we would be having those conversations with the board in the summer. So it's some this coming summer.
This is our standard operating procedure. This lets us create the funds. Of course, the board goes through in detail what the CIP program actually is when it's relevant, you know, when we're actually picking the streets, all that, all of that is stuff we bog on at the time.
Very good. Thank you.
Trustee Rubin, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Trustee Bree?
No questions.
All right. If there are no further questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax. Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Bree.
Yes.
Does anyone have anything else that is not on the agenda that they would like to raise at this time before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Not hearing anything, I will make my last request to management analysts. Lester, has anything else come in to us in terms of public comment?
No, President Levin, we did not receive any comment.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Trustee Mulvaney, did you bog on?
He's got it.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Bree.
Yes.
Although although we did it in a very calm, quiet fashion, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time this evening.
Take everyone, everyone do well.
Happy holidays.
Have a good holiday.
Good room at City Hall so much.